Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hey, I'm Dawn Dyer.
Present.
Deafening Nancy Whitten.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Cross.
Present.
Councilmember John Curley. Councilmember John James.
Here.
Councilmember Tom O'Dell.
Here.
Councilmember Shelby Dean.
Here.
Could I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Curley for personal reasons?
Yes, I'll move that.
Second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember James, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, does everybody have a copy of the revised agenda? And are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Oh, seeing none.
The revised agenda, was that on our table here?
Yes.
I think it was handed out last night also.
Okay.
Okay, have a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed. By your vote of six to zero, the agenda is approved. Next is our student liaison reports, and the students are really at home studying hard again.
We haven't seen them for awhile.
They're such good academics. And athletic. Okay, so next is public comment. Do we have a sign up? Speaking of athletics, the big game this week is going to be Skyline against Issaquah. Down in Issaquah, is that Friday night?
Yeah, oh, Issaquah.
Out of order.
So much for the Freed Farmhouse funding.
Take 'em to Freed Farmhouse.
Public comment, we have Laverda Dodderman and Wendy Britton. And you have five minutes because you're representing an organization.
Thank you. I'm Wendy Britton, volunteer for Master Chorus Eastside, and with me is Laverda Dodderman. And she's been a resident of Sammamish for 24 years. And she is a member of the choir for 11 years, and the manager for seven years. We came here today to speak to you about a city grant for $2,000. We realize that budgets have been tight, and the economy has been very tough on all of us. But we do believe that the arts are very important, and they make our community thrive. And if you can go to dinner and a show and stay on the east side, then it keeps our economy strong, instead of having to go to Seattle every time. So, we founded the Master Choir 20 years ago. It has been founded by Linda Gingrich, and she's currently the artistic director. And since 1991, we used to be called the Issaquah Choral, but now we are trying to have a wider influence on the east side, and that's why we renamed ourselves to Master Chorus Eastside. Did you have anything to add? Okay. We've played at Benaroya Hall, as well as Maidenbauer Kirkland Performance Center. We also traveled to Jamestown, and participated in America's 200th anniversary. In Virginia. And we also play on the Argosy Christmas Ship, as well as the Fourth on the Plateau National Anthem. We do have 45 singers in the chorus, and we also have a chamber group of 12 to 16 singers, which is available for smaller parties. We would use the grant to get the rights for certain musical pieces that we'd like to perform, and to hire certain musicians to play the instruments, to accompany us, as well as to secure venues to be able to provide our shows.
I wanted to add that we've been performing in Sammamish since the year 2000, at the Eastlake Performing Arts Center in Eastlake High School. Okay, so I'm going to talk about Sammamish a little bit. Of the 45 singers that we have in our group, 65 percent of those singers live right here in Sammamish, or in the bordering cities of Redmond and Issaquah. The remaining 35 percent live also on the east side, Bellevue, Carnation, Enamclaw, Hobart, Maple Valley, North Bend, Renton, and Snow Palmy. We get our funding, about 30 percent of our funding comes from ticket sales. We get about 5 percent corporate contributions, 40 percent from private contributions, 7 percent from public and private grants, and fundraising projects, 18 percent.
So, here in the city of Sammamish, we have a unique opportunity to create the kind of vibrant community we want to live in, play in, and do business in. And the arts are a huge part of that, so we hope that you'll support us, Master Chorus Eastside. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. And in your brochure, I see that Sunday, December 4th, at 7:30 PM, you're performing at Eastlake High School, a holiday concert, huh?
Yes, Victorian Christmas, it'll be a wonderful show.
Great, great, thank you very much.
Hope to see you there.
Any comments or questions about this?
Do we have their request in the budget?
No, I don't think it's in the, it's not, it wouldn't be under Human Services, so it would have to be, much like we do for the Sammamish Symphony.
Did we formally submit something for a grant?
We have not formally submitted something. We've asked, we've inquired about how to go about that process, and we were told that we need to come here and present, do what we're doing now. If there is a formal process, we'd be more than happy to go through that.
You know, I'm thinking, tonight, we're going to approve the budget for the next biennium, so it's a little late in the process. But we do do adjustment next year, and so perhaps we could work on getting, getting the request in for next year's adjustment. Nancy?
Ben, do we have any money that we could find somewhere to cover this?
Yes. It's ending fund balance reserve, that's where we could take it. I mean, if that's the council wants to do that, we would just have to reduce the ending fund balance.
So, we could do that this year?
Well, we could do it this year, or we could do it after we do our adjustments in February, after our retreat, where we see how we come out for 2010.
It'd be easier, Mr. Mayor, if the council desired to fund this thing for next year, we'll just do it tonight with the simple council motion, then I can just put it as a line item. If the council, my suggestion is that we get a complete application, and if you want to do this, a competitive process, we'll put through the system. So, it's your pleasure, whatever you want to do.
So, are you suggesting they go through the formal, it's not Human Services, so this is arts. This is arts, not Human Services.
You're making a good point.
So, when we did the Sammamish Symphony, we did not do it through the grants.
You put a, provided a line item for Sammamish Symphony, chambers, farmers market, and a couple other items, Sammy's Awards, so this will be in that category. If the council wants to do that, this will be a line item.
John?
How many of the concerts are actually in Sammamish? I know you have one coming up.
We only have one this coming season, and that's just because Eastlake is very busy, and they couldn't fit us on the calendar at all.
Are your performances usually sold out?
Well, Eastlake holds 600 people, so it would be our dream to sell out, but it hasn't happened. But we have had a concert at Pickering Barn in Issaquah, and that one was standing room only. So, this year, we're adding a second one there.
My thought would be is, I'm speaking out loud here, because we're kind of off guard here, but what if the city bought a block of tickets and then made them available? I don't want to undercut your ticket sales, but...
We have room for...
It might be simpler to do a grant than to...
Right, than to try to distribute tickets.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have to worry about how to distribute the tickets, I have to account for that, I have to provide records for the state auditor, it would be very complicated. John, also, it's a great idea, but the management of that would be very difficult.
Other thoughts? Nancy?
I guess, I mean, we actually increased the symphonies, Sammamish Symphonies, and I've attended your concert over the years, and they're wonderful.
Thank you.
There are a lot of local people, even young people, as I recall.
Yeah, families come, even students from the school, we've invited students and they come.
So, I think they have a real community presence, and I would support, I would like to make a motion, I guess, to... How do I make the motion? Just to give them a grant for $2,000 as a line item?
Well, as a procedural matter, to the extent you're going to affect the budget, you should wait until that item is before the council. Right now, we're in the midst of a public comment.
Good point.
Oh, okay.
So, we'll be bringing up the budget early in our agenda, so we'll address it at that time. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mary Moore.
My comment earlier about the football game, I coach at Issaquah, so that's why I'm rooting for Issaquah.
You're excused.
Mary Moore, 7804, Renton, Issaquah, wrote Issaquah. Just to kind of give you an update on the Freed House, since we saw you last, last month, you've asked us to continue our efforts for fundraising and community support, and we've been very encouraged by the number of people that have been seeking us out, and bringing forward pledge forms, and a lot of volunteer hours committed. We are moving forward, we have over $10,000 raised so far, more promises of money in the future. Let's see, what else do we have here? We were at the Community Service Fair at Skyline High School, and had 29 high school students interested, they signed up and offered to help out, very excited when they saw pictures of the house, know the house, and are anxious to help out. Vicky will probably talk a little bit about the changes with the Sammamish Heritage Society. But I just wanted to let you know that we've been working on fundraising, a lot of positive support coming our way. And one request we do have is, we've had several people get ahold of us and say, you know, I want to support the house, but I don't know who's taking money for it, and I think it's because the house doesn't have a sign, if there's any way that we could put some kind of banner on the house, you know, asking people if they want to donate to save it, that they can contact us, because people drive by and they don't know what's going on with it. As much as we try to do outreach, it's still hard to get ahold of everybody, but we've had a lot of positive input lately, just out of the blue, we've had a lot of people emailing us and getting ahold of us in support, so. If you have any questions for me, or comments?
Have you done any more research on the prevailing wage issue and private moving of the house?
Well, it kind of depends on tonight's vote, if you're in support of the house. Once again, staff has provided us with a copy of a lease agreement that we could, we have an attorney in our group that would be willing to take a look at that and work with the city regarding that. Absolutely, that's something that, we're just waiting for tonight to kind of move forward.
Okay, good. Any other questions? John?
I've got a point of clarification. No offense to the newspaper and Sammamish Review, but they quoted me as defunding the Freed House, and I had a friendly amendment to actually make $7,000 firm in funding for the Freed House, so I just wanted to let your group know that if you weren't here to the bitter end that night when we were talking about it, that was misreported, unfortunately.
Oh, okay, thanks. Thank you, yeah, no, we couldn't make it.
Things happen.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, thank you.
I was just going to back you up, actually. Okay. So, briefly, I'm Vicky Baggett, Sammamish resident of 24 years, and we just wanted to let you know that we recently had an election, we have a new board. I'm the president, Denise is the treasurer, Pat is our vice president, and Dee Carroll is our secretary, serving a second term here. So, I just wanted to let you know, we are really gearing up here to have a fresh approach as the board of Sammamish Heritage Society. And also, you know, if things go well for us tonight, specifically, what we would like to put in front of the Freed House, again, to ID the fact that it isn't just abandoned and nobody cares, we'd actually like to put a sign up in front of the house that's about six feet tall, that would be a thermometer, that we will update regularly to show as our pledges increase, so the community will be aware that it's being worked on and things are moving forward. So, if that's okay with you, I mean, we, you know, we'll maybe have to get something in writing to you, but that is kind of where we're going with that.
Good.
Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions for Vicky?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council this evening? Nope, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Moved in second. The consent agenda includes payroll for the period ending October 31st, in the amount of $249,464.55. Approval of claims for the period ending November 16th of $2,072,790. And ordinance, ordinance number 2010-287, which is the second reading relating to the levying of taxes, and establishing the amount to be levied in 2011 on the assessed valuation of the property within the city. Number three is ordinance, the second reading amending ordinance number 2009-273. That's the 29-2010 city budget, for the purpose of revising the 29-2010 biennial budget, as we had discussed at previous meetings, and that's ordinance 2010-288. Number four is ordinance, the second reading adopting the Isqwa School District, number 411, impact fees for 2010. That's ordinance 2010-289. Then ordinance 2010-290, which is the second reading adopting the Lake Washington School District, 414, impact fees for 2010. And number six is the second reading amending SMC 2415020 to adopt by reference the Snoqualmie Valley School District, number 410, capital facilities plan, and to adopt the associated Washington School impact fees for 2010. That's ordinance 2010-291. Number seven is resolution repealing Resolution 2041, and establishing a depository bank and authorized signatures on city bank accounts. That's Resolution 2010-439. Number eight is resolution establishing a travel policy that conforms to state law requirements for city-related travel and travel expense reimbursements. That's Resolution 2010-440. And number nine is a contract for park maintenance services with Total Landscape. Number 10 is a contract for park custodial services with SMS Cleaning. Number 11 is a contract for on-call HVAC service with McDonald Miller. Number 12 is a contract for on-call plumbing with Eastside Plumbing. And number 13 is contract with graphic design services, for graphic design services with Uproar. Those are the items on the consent agenda. Deputy Mayor?
Ben, could you please clarify, Mr. City Manager, in regard to the levying of taxes for this year, the rates? They're intended, as I understand it, not to increase the taxes for people this year, is that correct?
The council directed staff in the preparation of the budget to not take 1 percent property tax increase that is legally allowed at the council's discretion. So, your reflection is accurate as to what took place.
Thank you.
Right, this is the same as we had at the first reading.
Right.
I just wanted to clarify since it's on the consent agenda.
Don, even given that, is it procedurally correct to approve this before we approve the budget?
Mr. City Manager, we ask that same question.
Yes, and answer to that question is yes, because even if you alter the budget, the council's direction had been that we would take the money from the ending fund balance, rather than increasing the property taxes.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? Are we ready to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by your vote of six to zero, the consent agenda is approved. We have no public hearings tonight, so we go to unfinished business, and this is an ordinance, second reading adopting the 2011-2012 biennial budget. Now, this is in your packet, it's bill number two.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, we had an extensive staff reports, and we had a number of study sessions and the public meetings on this topic, so I just ask our finance director, Lyman Howard, to give us a brief overview, very brief overview.
Thank you, Lyman.
Thank you very much. This is probably the shortest PowerPoint that I've done for this council, so please bear with me.
Thank you, Lyman.
Okay. We're here at the second reading for the 2011-2012 budget. This is the budget calendar, as it was presented to council. We have, we started very early this year, staff started back in March, and we've had a myriad of meetings throughout the summer and the fall, discussing various aspects of the budget. The final budget incorporates all of the council directives received through the budget process. We have scaled the budget to current economic activity, and it has been heavily scrutinized both by the council and city management, again, through a myriad of formal and informal meetings and questions. This particular budget cuts the, from the previous biennium, it cuts about 18 percent in total expenditures, or about $24 million. The capital budgets have been cut 50 percent. The operating expense budgets, with the exception of police and fire, have been cut 15 percent. Surface water enterprise budget has been cut over 50 percent. We have increased human service funding by $32,000. We have cut 10 percent of our full-time equivalent employee workforce, from 75 FTEs during this current period, to 67 and a half for the next biennium. And so, the overall, this is a summary page, showing that operating expenditures or operating budget would be about $59 million, capital $22 million, surface water management about $5 million. So, we, yes.
Nancy?
Your graph is great in some ways, but it says 108 million without transfers equal 86 million? What is the 108, then?
No, 108 million dollars is the total budget, it's 86 million dollars without transfers.
Probably should have a comma in there.
Yeah, I mean, that's very, your equal sign makes it.
Okay, my apologies.
Doesn't equal out. Thank you, it was puzzling me, so I wasn't trying to be cheeky with you.
Nope, that's, comment's well taken. In conclusion, this is the second reading of the 2011-2012 budget ordinance, and staff respectfully requests that council approve this for the next biennial budget.
Questions for staff? Okay, then we should get the motion on the table. Can I have a motion to approve the ordinance adopting the 2011-2012 budget?
I move approval.
Thank you, second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, council discussion, any amendments proposed? Mark?
It's a really complex document, the budget. I really appreciate the thoroughness that it comes to us, the formatting, the work, every question that we have, there's a thoughtful response, and clearly, a lot of analysis that goes into putting the budget together. I guess because of my own professional work, I'm concerned that, over time, that we're going to do, need to do more surface water management work here in the city, including some monitoring work, and additional storm drainage control work, because of the amount of old pipes that we inherited from King County. I just, we are doing a two-year budget here, I see the numbers, I'm concerned that by doing a two-year budget, that we aren't leaving ourselves any flex there in the surface water management to do water quality monitoring, or to have money set aside for storm drainage projects that maybe we don't even see now. Other, you know, I just think it's a great document, I just wanted to add that cautionary note, I'm ready to adopt it as it is, but over time, I think we do need to do some water quality monitoring, and particularly, when you look at Thompson Basin, where we're putting a big chunk of our urban town center, we are looking to make a lot of decisions related to low-impact development and regulations on land use, and I want that to be fact-based, and not simply guesswork. And right now, the wetlands and the water temperatures and things, we're just collecting data here and there, and not in a systematic way as a city.
Nancy?
I respect and agree with you in some respects, Mark, but we discussed it, remember, we're going to have our rate study this coming year, and we're going to be discussing some very significant projects that I think do have line items in the budget. And as I recall, we also, we're going to be talking about how to finance some of those projects, and so that if we needed to make a budget amendment next year, this gap was discussed, I think, and it was, it was pre-thought out, that we wouldn't put it in there right now, because, you know, it's a utility, and we're not sure how we'd be funding it, or what source it would come from, but it's definitely, the larger projects that you in particular were mentioning, will be...
So, we're going to do a study next year?
We're going to do a rate study, and then we're going to look at the study and get more information on the specific drainage projects that you in particular had been mentioning, and we were going to, at that point in time, when we got some more better dollar figures, figure out how equitably we might want to finance them, whether it be an LID, or assessment, or a rate-wide, citywide rate increase, or however, so it's in there, it's just not real, it doesn't stand out like a sore thumb.
Well, my ideas, or citizen ideas, or other council member ideas, all to spend public money, need to be on the table and studied, and then considered in context, so I appreciate that, and I'm comfortable then, that the surface water management portion of the budget, along with the rest of the budget, is in good shape, and reflects good decision-making, and I'm ready to support it.
Good, other comments? John?
About Mark's comment, or just in general?
In general.
Okay, I'd like to address the Master Chorus, I think we were going to bring that up at this point.
Would you like to make a motion to amend the budget?
I would, and I'm a creative thinker, I'm thinking about ways we can fill the auditorium, so maybe this is for a discussion with Jesse from our Parks and Recreation, but I would say, if the request is 2,000, that we spread it over two years, $1,000 per year, and we become a sponsor of the one event that you're going to have here in Sammamish.
So, would you like to make that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, and if you want to put discount coupons in our newsletter for a buck off on each ticket, maybe we can help you fill it up. Even if everybody came, you'd still make $400, but yes, I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, discussion of John's amendment.
First of all, let me say that years and years ago, I had, did some work, some services for Linda Gingrich, the manager, but that was probably long before the city was incorporated. But when you're talking about giving grants, I think that's helpful to have that made known. I very much support projects like, I wouldn't call them, I wouldn't call it a significant donation, I think it's a meaningful donation, I think it helps to recognize that the city would be sponsoring this, but I do support this, we feel that we do an... would be sponsoring this, but I do support this, I, we feel that we do an excellent job with supporting the symphony, we give them, for, in exchange for the money they do, we ask that they perform in our summer concerts program. So maybe if we do adopt this, per John's motion for this biennium, we then ask them to come to us if they want, would like some additional funding. Again, with the symphony, we give $5,000 to, I mean, it's not a great deal of money, but that you try and think of something with our Parks Department and other staff that's more Sammamish-focused. So I, I support the, John's motion at this time, but again, would also invite you to work with our Parks Director and see if it might be appropriate for a concert up here being offered, one of our events or something where we're trying to draw our community together.
Tom?
I supported the, the grant to the Sammamish Symphony, I'm going to support this one too, but I very much would like to encourage your group to come back with a plan next year at the appropriate time. We'd also like to see a few more concerts located up in this area as opposed to Kirkland, so. Maybe we have some sway with the school board.
Good, other comments? Michelle?
A subset of this group, Rotary had a going-away party for Tim Burke and his wife Lynn, who are moving to Arizona, in the home of our president, and the East Side Chorus, what did you call it, the performing group?
Chamber.
Chamber group came and performed for us, and it was, it was delightful, it was wonderful. That was the first time I'd experienced your group, so it was a nice send-off, and I understand that they are fairly regular party invitees and entertainment, especially through the holiday seasons, in people's homes and things in the community, so. And that is obviously a little profit center, not profit center, but a little exposure and income for your group as well, so.
Good. Other comments? Are we ready for the question? All those in favor of the amendment appointing or including $1,000 per year for the master chorus east side?
For the next two years.
For the next two years. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By your vote of six zero, that amendment is approved. Any other proposed amendments?
I have a question for Lyman. Lyman, with the failure of the two liquor initiatives in this year's election, we pull, well, previous to the result, we pulled most of the revenue out of the budget?
Correct.
And looking at this, I see you've not added it back in.
We, that is absolutely correct. We are planning on adding that in back at the mid-year adjustment period. It's probably in the neighborhood of about $200,000. There's a, there was a lag in the, the timing of the input of the initiative, and so rather than the total amount being lost, there was about a $200,000 loss in the first year. So actually, the actual collections should be in the neighborhood of $200,000 greater than what's actually shown in this particular budget.
Okay, thank you.
This is assuming that the legislature can't figure out a way of keeping that to balance, help balance the state budget, right?
That is also true.
Other comments or questions on the budget?
I, I have something on the budget itself. I, I think many people in this room know that I am not a fan of the Freed House, and I'm still not a fan. However, I would like to give them one more opportunity. And what I'd like to do is provision the line item in this budget for the Freed House for one year only. At the end of the year, if they have not raised the matching funds, then it will be deleted from the next year's budget. And I'd like to make that as a motion.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Nancy's second.
For a sake of discussion.
Mark?
You know, I have been skeptical about the, just the, the amount of money and the utility. I've been willing to see the new momentum that this group has, has brought forward, and I'm willing to have the money stay in the budget for two years, in part because of the existing financial situation here in the country. I understand and appreciate Tom's concern, I share some of those same concerns, but I think giving them a 12-month deadline is too short, and I would prefer to leave it in the budget as it is, which I believe is a two, two years.
Other discussion? John?
No, no, I was pointing to Nancy first.
Nancy?
I was very excited to see a letter from somebody who said he'd made a $5,000 pledge to be matched. It's the first time I've seen a letter from a citizen making a significant promise, so I was very pleased. At some point in time, you have to draw a line and say, cut bait, fisher cut bait. So I'm not going to necessarily support the year, but I want you to understand from my position, when we do our budget adjustments at this coming year, if we don't see significant progress, then maybe it would be time to take it out of the budget when we do our budget readjustments. So, and also, I am concerned if you don't get significant carry-through in this year and focus that this is it kind of mentality, that focus on it, that the house is just going to continue to deteriorate, and I, that concerns me. I mean, I, two years to think of kind of treading water, so if, if I see significant progress this year, like that one letter was very, very exciting, I'm happy to support it for another year if that, if it hasn't fallen apart by then, but I do have a concern that, that you recognize that there's a lot of people on the fence here and that your efforts really need to be focused on what you can achieve this year, from my standpoint, that's a personal.
Okay, thank you. Michelle?
I would like to keep the money in, the budget for the two years, and I'd actually like to not have it frozen, but I'd like to have some of those funds available if they wanted to put a "Save the Freed House" banner on it with a website, or the Sammamish Heritage website could go on a banner on the property. I'd also like to see those funds available if the house needs securing through this winter, if, you know, the roof, you know, the, the existing stabilization, there's any issues with that, that, that those funds could be used to secure it, which we have used in the past to kind of keep the tarps on and that sort of thing. So I'd like to have that flexibility so that, that it can be secured. And I also like for us to reconsider being able to locate it at the Sammamish Commons, so that when people are donating their money, they know that the place has a home, because, you know, right now, it's just a sack of boards and, and it takes a lot of vision for people to realize that it could have a home, and so, you know, it, like I said in the last, my last go-around was, I feel like this house is just a catch-22. For, for the community to really embrace this project, it has to have a place, and it doesn't, still doesn't have a place. I think they're doing phenomenal amount of legwork and community outreach to attract attention to it, but we're certainly not doing anything to help them.
Okay, well, we have one amendment on the table. Would you like to close on that amendment?
Yeah. As I made the earlier clarification, I was worth, I was willing to do 7,000 firm and, you know, kind of a no strings attached other than to preserve the house so it didn't deteriorate more in our last go-around, and I hear what Tom is saying, and it reminds me a little bit of the conversation that we had during our retreat as to where we put our priorities, because we have other things that we could do with this money as well, and, and one of the things is a house that sits right here on the Sammamish Commons, which is the Kelman property, which has a roof, which has plumbing, which has a foundation, and in my opinion, as somebody in real estate, it's an underutilized asset. I might be more inclined to say, per Michelle, maybe we make 7,000 of that available to you now, 63,000 maybe is a question mark for the next year. Based on the momentum I'm seeing, maybe this isn't such a big hurdle to raise another 70,000 at this point in time. I'm not sure where it belongs, I mean, that, that's a whole nother issue, whether it's the Commons or some other site, yet to be determined. But rather than just this money going away, I, I guess I would propose a friendly amendment if the council is so inclined that i-if after the 7,000, if you decide that that's something you still want to entertain, becomes available now, that that 63,000 remainder maybe be allowed to go somewhere else, like the Kelman property, ADA compliance and a few other things, and a five-year lease, we could probably turn that into an asset where somebody might be able to use it. Community service groups, meeting places, maybe even a restaurant facility, you know, so if you want to be creative and throw everything on the table, I'll go back to saying that that might be a good compromise.
I couldn't take that as a friendly amendment.
But you didn't make the amendment.
I seconded it.
Yeah. Why don't we deal with the amendment that's on the table first, and then perhaps talk about a different amendment? Tom's amendment is to restrict the line item for one year to get matching funds. Are we ready for that question?
But question, Michelle had mentioned having some of those monies become available.
That's a different.
We're trying to unravel these motions.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's address this one.
I didn't know if that was tied to the.
Yeah, we, we sort of went off track here a little bit. Let's, let's address Tom's amendment first. Are we ready for the question?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of Tom's amendment to restrict it for one year, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
By a vote of five-one, that fails. So now, Michelle made some suggestions, and John made some suggestions. Does anybody want to present, make an amendment?
Or maybe restate the motion, and hopefully that of this, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping the 70,000 in there for two years, of which $7,000 could be used for maintenance and to put a banner on the property.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to retain the 70,000 in and.
Give permission for a banner to be placed by a nonprofit.
Give permission to spend up to $7,000 for a banner and protecting the house in maintenance.
With no provision after a year, it's full two years?
Well, you've asked, we've already tasked them with matching the money that we have put in the budget, so if you take it away, what are they matching?
No, it would be for a year.
Well, then let's give them some time to do it.
Okay, the amendment is for two years.
To allow the 63, the remainder to be in, in place for two years, 7,000 to be immediately available to preserve it and to allow for a banner.
And actually, discussion on the Kelman mansion perhaps would be a good topic for the retreat. We discuss it just about every year.
Yeah, we do. Got a bigger plan.
Any other discussion on this amend, proposed amendment? Tom?
I've said this little piece before, but I'm going to say it one more time. At least a couple of years before we incorporated as a city, my next-door neighbor knocked on my door, and she asked me to sign a petition to save the Freed House. I signed it, my wife signed it. We are now 13 years past this. My next-door neighbor, who was in grade school at the time, is now three or four years out of the University of Washington. This little piece of property, actually, maybe it's not property, it's a building, there's no property with it right now, has been around this city for a very long time, sitting up on these blocks. As I said before, I want to be reasonable, but there is a point where I run out of reason, and I think I'm there. This is why I believe we should make a decision that we've given this thing enough time and find something else to do with the funds along the lines of what John James was suggesting. I am voting no on this motion, but I'd like everyone to know why, and that is why.
Thank you, other comments? Nancy?
I'm not in favor of the motion because I don't want to spend city taxpayers' money unless I know it's going to be meaningful, and if we go out and we spend $7,000 on this house, and it turns out that we're not going to fund the other 70 because they haven't, or the, the balance of the 70 because they haven't raised the funds and can't get matches, then the 7,000 would be throwaway money. So I can't support that portion of it. So I'm going to vote no on this, I am going to vote to keep it in the budget, but I want the whole thing reserved, and I think we also need to do some soul-searching on where it goes, and I would much prefer to see it find a home on a farmland like Mary Piggott's, if there were enough money to carry through and actually do it and do a nice job on it without it just, I never want to move it with it to sit on blocks for another X years while we fundraised or looked for grants, so. The 70,000, I think, if it were matched by the community, would provide a nice fund to move it, to fix up the exterior, to have it be attractive, so that's kind of why, until I see that, or the rest of that effort, I'm not willing to commit to spending, and $7,000 is significant in a budget where you're trying to cut every penny and look at things very carefully. So I'll, I'll vote to keep it in the budget as is, but with the understanding that hopefully that they'll find funds to match it.
Thank you, John?
I would have been more inclined with the 7,000 and a year deadline, because I think that creates urgency, which is good for fundraising, and I think there's momentum. If you carry it on for two years, it kind of loses focus and energy, so I, I guess I wouldn't support the two-year timeframe with the 7,000.
Actually, I'm going to support the motion, I think it's, I'm not suggesting that we just throw away the $7,000, but I have the 7,000 available for appropriate repairs, it doesn't mean we're going to spend all 7,000. But I think we should call for the question and then see if there's any other amendments. Any other discussion?
I've got one more comment.
Okay, Nancy?
And that is that if they've successfully fundraised over 10,000, maybe they could get the community to come up with the 7,000. And then when they come up with the balance in pledges, we would be matching the original seven along with everything else.
Okay, are we ready for the question?
Well, then they could spend it.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment which would be to retain the 70,000 for two years but allow 7,000 to be used for banner and maintenance items, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
By a vote of three to three, it fails. Any other amendments to the budget? No, then are we ready for the question? And the question is.
This is the final, to approve the whole budget?
Yes.
Forever hold your peace for two years?
That's correct.
At least for the next year? I, I do have a question that's probably more of a comment, and that's the, the town center that we just approved, and the skepticism that I'm feeling and hearing and receiving emails from the property owners that we've got this dream, and when is it going to become a reality, and we don't have any money set aside for any infrastructure at this point in time, so the question of if has gone away, but the question still looms as to when? And I think we're making a huge mistake and not showing good faith to the citizens of Sammamish who live in the town center by not allocating any resources or funding, even if it's just a placeholder for future improvements, so that, that's something I'm concerned about.
That's another good topic. Excuse me.
For our retreat.
For our retreat.
Yes.
Any other comments on the budget as it's written? Nancy?
I just want to say thank you to staff, and to the council for their input, I think it's an excellent budget. I'm really, really pleased we're not raising taxes for the second year in a row, and that we have been able to cut the spending and postpone and defer out our crossover point, so I think we've accomplished in a broad brush. So I think we've accomplished in a broad brush the goals we wanted to accomplish, and I'm very pleased with that, and thank you for your hard work. I know, as you said, you started months earlier this year, and I think it's a great achievement. Other communities are struggling, and we certainly aren't struggle-free, but it's an excellent budget. Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Lyman.
One last question. Are we allowed to address the audience?
The audience?
On attendance, the Heritage Society, the Freed House?
Well, you can dress in general.
Yeah. My question is, is would the people that are here showing support for the Freed House rather keep it the way it is for unknown seventy thousand dollars, or would they want a compromise from the council of maybe seven thousand dollars firm and seventy thousand have to be raised in the next year where the money goes in jeopardy? I just don't know. We're making decisions without really asking the people that it potentially impacts.
Just for clarification.
Yes.
The reason we put the money in the budget was that it was to be matched, and that is what they have been working on, is matching the seventy thousand. So if you say firm seven, what does that get them?
No, firm seven and the sixty-three thousand remainder would be for matching funds. It would be a compromise between the one-year seventy only and the seven thousand over two years. You make it seven thousand now, big guy a year to come up with the matching funds, otherwise the money goes away.
I don't quite follow that.
We just took a vote on it, John.
Well, he took, we took a vote on two years.
I can always raise it, since we haven't closed discussion yet, I'm just trying to think if there's a, if something, if that would be a benefit to them, I guess I would want to know about it. Because there seems to be some opinions that maybe it would and maybe it wouldn't.
Well, I think it's, if you want to make an...
What it is.
If you want to make an amendment to the budget, at this point, I would entertain that.
I think they're confused as to, okay, I don't know what you're proposing. You're proposing, put seven thousand dollars in the budget, what would they do with that? And then, and then you're saying, what happens to the match? They've been working off of the premise that we have put seventy thousand in the budget and we would, we were asking them to match that with community contributions.
Yeah, and that would remain the same. The only difference is it would piggyback Tom's suggestion of only having those matching funds available for a year.
Except how are they going to match the seven thousand if we just give...
Okay, hold on here now.
Be sixty-three.
Hold on.
Same thing as...
Hold on. I think we're getting astray.
We are. And they're confused.
This is a topic which we can...
I think if that's the case, then it just answered my question, so I remove the...
Okay, because this topic can be brought up, we can always make adjustments to the budget after we see the year-end balances, after we address it after our retreat. So I think at this point, we should go along with what we have already discussed and set aside.
So the question remains, if the tarps blow off, you know, or the house is not secured from the weather, the next two winters, the city still owns it. The Heritage Society does not own this property. So are we going to allow for the security of the property while this, while they have been tasked with this enterprise?
Looking at me like I have to answer.
Well, I don't know. Are we? I mean, it's, I'm confused. I don't think they know what they're supposed to do.
Would, well, as you said, it's our house, so would you like to make an amendment with regard to the maintenance?
Well, I did, that there would be some flexibility on these dollars if we needed to secure the property, so...
That one failed.
Okay.
So...
So what happens?
Perhaps we could get a report back from staff as to the condition of the house and make, and bring a recommendation to us.
Then we'd have to make a decision at that point. I think so. You have already resources in the budget to come back to you with a report and let you guys decide what you want us to do with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments or suggested amendments to the budget? Are we ready for the question? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the 2011-2012 biennial budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? By your vote of six-zero, ordinance 2010-292 is approved.
Okay, I had a question before we took the vote, for clarification, and where we were with the Freed House, we're with the Freed House, the budget that we're approving is with the seventy thousand in it for two years.
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Red mark, guys.
Next, we have item number fifteen, which is actually, which is actually bill number eight in your packet. We had pulled it off of the consent agenda, and that's the second reading amending the municipal code for the purpose of increasing the penalty for discharging a weapon within the city limits from a misdemeanor to a gross misdemeanor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just recently, we had two unfortunate incidents that the two individuals used bow and arrow, unfortunately kill two deers within the city limits. City has already an existing ordinance that defines that weapons discharged is being illegal inside the city limits, and the penalties for that is a misdemeanor. The description of that penalty is thousand dollars, up to thousand dollars monetary fine and/or ninety days jail time. Deputy Mayor Within and Councilmember Odell asked us to bring forward an ordinance that the increase in the penalties from misdemeanors to gross misdemeanor. And that's what we brought this ordinance before you. The only difference between what we have in our books and what's being presented to you is the penalties associated with the two ordinances. Gross misdemeanor has a penalty provision up to five thousand dollars and/or one-year jail time. So that's what the staff report is.
Okay, I was mistaken. This was not on the consent agenda, this was on the regular agenda.
Yes.
So any questions of staff on this? Tom?
Ben, is the difference between the misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor simply the thousand to five thousand, or is there an intermediate point?
The both, actually, Tom, is a monetary fee or penalty increase from thousand, up to thousand dollars to, up to five thousand.
Up to.
Up to, and the jail time also increases up to, and/or jail time up to ninety days would go up to one year. And then our esteemed city attorney informed me that if it were up to him, he would do it to ten years jail time, but it's up to discretion of the judge.
Other questions for staff? Nancy, and then Mark.
Our mayor brought up a point that I thought was very valid, making a gross misdemeanor to, for someone who intentionally loads a weapon and fires it, I think puts at risk citizens in our community. Loaded weapon, as we know, misfires all the time. People, there are all sorts of stories every other day in the press countrywide. So I feel very strongly that I want to increase the penalties for discharging a weapon in the city to, with the intent to kill an animal. But, Mr. City Manager, our mayor had brought up the fact that interfering with an animal was subject to the same penalties. Is that correct? Could you explain that? I mean, I think we should differentiate, as our mayor had suggested in some conversations between...
Perhaps the mayor can direct me to...
Yes, this is paragraph three, prohibited activities, section A. It shall be unlawful for any person to willfully use a weapon against any wild animal or wild bird, comma, or trap, capture, or disturb any wild animal or wild bird, or to take the eggs or nests of any such bird in the city, subject to the provisions, et cetera. And then you refer down to penalties for A. It says each person convicted of a violation of this chapter shall be guilty of a gross misdemeanor. Now, of course, I'm assuming that most people won't be tried on the provision of disturbing an animal. For example, if the animal is eating your flowers and you shoo it away, but that's, according to this, it's against the law to do that.
So I...
It's a gross misdemeanor.
So I guess my comment is, I'd like to see an ordinance brought to us with just the offense of intentionally shooting at the animal, discharging a weapon, I guess. Intentionally discharging a weapon is very different to me than interfering with an animal.
Mr. City Attorney?
Staff's certainly capable of doing that. I would tell you that simply shooing away an animal from your flowers does not rise to the level of an offense. The type of action that's anticipated here is something more significant, but if council feels strongly that you want to differentiate in some fashion, and that's the will of the council, staff will carry out your will.
Well, I don't know if we want to wordsmith it tonight, but I just brought it to the attention that it really doesn't look good to have a gross misdemeanor for disturbing a bird nest or...
I'd like to see that brought back to us at some future date by staff to...
Other comments on the main ordinance? Tom?
Yeah, being one of the proponents of toughening this whole situation up after having three incidents in the time I've been in Sammamish, one which involved not a bow and arrow, but a high-caliber deer rifle several years ago, maybe a quarter of a mile from the high school, well within the lethal range of it. I was interested in making sure that the individuals who are doing this, if, assuming they're caught, are punished, and more than just a slap on the wrist. I don't believe that the punishment for this type of thing should be greater than that for a DUI, as an example. But at the same time, I don't want to just stay where we are. I think there needs to be some increment here. I don't know if there's a repeat offense type situation possible here. I don't think we've had that, although in the country, you will find people who are repeatedly poaching animals, so they're, they could be subject to a repeat offense type provision with stronger provisions, but I'm not sure that's appropriate for what we're trying to do here. I'm particularly concerned about the amount of potential jail time, because while it's a bonehead move on the part of the individual to do this in a city of forty-two thousand people where we're not wearing blaze orange during hunting, during hunting season or outside of hunting season, I do think that we might be overkilling a bit here. And frankly, I'd like to give this whole thing some more thought before I vote on it.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney?
Council's authority extends to setting the penalty. Penalty is, provides a range up to a certain dollar amount, up to a certain amount of jail time. I will tell you that when a judge imposes a sentence, they will do so on the basis of the circumstances of the particular incident, potential danger that's identified, as well as the character and background of the individual offender. So to the extent that there's a concern that the maximum penalty will automatically be imposed, I'd like to reduce your concern by saying, excuse me, that the judge takes into account a variety of factors before imposing a sentence.
Mark?
Maybe I'm not reading this, because I know this is similar to a lot of other rules and laws in the state, and there's no reason to make ours unique if it doesn't need to be, but the purpose section, number one, talks about to protect humans, domestic animals, and property from the likelihood of jeopardy, and then we're really just talking about hunting wild animals. I was wondering if the language should be more general to protect domestic animals as well as wild animals from being shot at with either rifles or arrows. Or maybe it does, and I'm just not reading that part.
First line, domestic animals.
And so they're covered, but I don't see them listed in all the other paragraphs where it says, "Use of a weapon shall mean any effort to injure, kill, or harass a wild animal or wild bird by means of firearms." That's what I was seeing.
Okay. So council's pleasure.
If you feel that a shooting at somebody's neighbor's dog would also be covered by the same rule, then that's fine, but I do want to make sure our domestic animals get the same protection.
It would not be covered, although it brings to mind, in my youth, when I was a prosecutor, county council in a county north of here was discussing whether or not to impose a leash law, and one of the council members says, "We don't need a leash law, we all have guns."
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
That was helpful, Bruce.
Mark, what you're suggesting is, where it says purpose, the purpose of this section is to protect humans, domestic animals, and property. Are you suggesting domestic and wild animals?
Well, it says, is to protect humans, but it sounds like it's only to, that the only, that only shooting arrows or rifles at wild animals is prohibited, not at domestic animals.
Not domestic animals, I see.
Although, you know...
Well, then you would like to add any domestic or wild animal?
The city attorney just saying at the council's pleasure, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. That's the only point I have. I understand that the penalty is up to, it's not simply always going to be the one thousand or the five thousand, it's up to that amount, and that the judge would have discretion in that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Just a minute. Mark, then are you suggesting that in prohibited activities, three A, in that line, you would say, willfully use a weapon against any domestic or wild animal?
Correct.
Okay, do we have a second to that amendment?
Also a question. It talks about catching, though. I mean, isn't that something you do with domestic animals?
Where does it say catching?
On the first, you got to go back to the beginning. Traps, weapons...
Are we working on this ordinance tonight here, or is the council's first pleasure still holds that to pull in the parked item and come back to you with your concerns?
Can we have a study session on this where we can get some direction to you that's...
Rather than editing the ordinance tonight, my recommendation to you is that let's not go there. Let's, I think these are very good comments, we're taking it, then we'll just look at it and put it in the parked item and bring it back later to talk about.
Can I ask one question? Is it possible to mandate a minimum sentence of like a day in jail?
Okay, so if we're going to have it on the study session, let's hold the questions for the study session, too, then.
True.
Okay, so we are postponing this to a time indefinite, I guess.
Right, we're sitting on the parked items right now.
So do I have a motion to postpone? Did I ever get the motion on the table? I can't even remember.
No.
Nope.
Oh.
Oh, yes. Yeah, Tom and Nancy did.
Okay, how about a motion to postpone this indefinitely?
Should we withdraw the original motion?
Not table it.
Not table.
Postpone indefinitely or to a time certain?
Well, given the fact that you have a motion on the table, my suggestion would be to simply withdraw the motion, and then council at an appropriate time can schedule the matter for further discussion.
Okay, let's see, who made the motion?
Tom and Nancy. I'll withdraw it if I second it.
Okay, so the motion's been withdrawn, and let's put it on the parked items. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
I guess I'd like to give staff some friendly suggestions that they bring it back, maybe in February or so, or January, sometime after.
Well, there's a diversity of opinion here, and so perhaps a study session is appropriate because I suspect there won't be consensus if we get four different points of view from council, so my recommendation is let's see if council can establish a consensus on the direction you want to give before staff starts undertaking any drafting.
Oh, I was suggesting that it be scheduled for a study session.
The mayor and the city manager will work on scheduling it for a study session. Okay? Very good. Then we come to new business, which is the contract for sports turf maintenance with the Brickman Group.
My report was there, council asked this item to be pulled out of the consent calendar, so our Parks and Recreation Director... So our Parks and Recreation Director is here to give a brief report on this.
I'm trying to find it right now. Which tab is it?
It is the last tab. Before.
No.
That says graphics, that says graphic design.
It's tab number 11.
11.
Tab number 11.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is a contract with the Brickman Group for maintenance of the community sports fields at Skyline High School and Eastlake High School. This is an annual contract. The amount we're requesting is authorization for $65,000, up to $65,000. The contract amount is $48,681 plus Washington State sales tax. We usually ask for an additional authorization should additional maintenance tasks become necessary during the calendar year. This is a contract, although we haven't been doing it with these folks. We've been doing, performing maintenance on these fields per our inter-local agreements with the school districts since they opened. At this time, I don't have anything else to add unless you have specific questions.
Questions for staff? Nancy?
I have a question. If this, the rates that we just increased to, over the next two years for the use of these fields, hourly rates are pretty significant for some people. If the community were to lose additional time on these fields, then to make them break even, we'd have to increase the hourly rates we charge the teams, is that not correct?
Sure.
If we follow that policy of breaking even.
That's correct. We establish the rates based on the total usage available for community and then the rental fees that we charge for. So if you reduce the community availability, then technically you could, we could find ourselves in a position to pay more for the replacement cost.
So, and these maintenance costs are fairly minimal, but again, over 10 years, they're, you know, over half a million dollars. So I guess I would like to have it understood that the policy should be that we preserve our hours that we've agreed to with these school districts. Or we should, you know, because it affects the amounts we have to get if we're going on a policy of recoupment from the teams. If we decrease the hours, then we would be increasing the rates either to the teams or to the general fund. So that was, I guess, my concern.
Okay. Any other questions? And Tom?
Jesse, does this amount represent an increase or decrease from the prior year?
Decrease.
Roughly how much?
About $4,000.
Thank you.
That's good.
Any other questions? Okay, could I have a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with the Brickman Group for $48,681 plus Washington State sales tax?
No, I thought she wanted up to $65,000.
Authorizing up to $65,000.
Yeah, I was working on that. To provide sports turf maintenance at the community sports fields and authorize an additional amount, total authorization not to exceed $65,000 for additional sports turf maintenance as needed throughout the year. Have such a motion?
Second?
It's been moved to second. Any discussion on the motion? Nope, ready for the question? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, your vote is six zero. The city manager is so authorized.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. So next is the ordinance, the first reading, amending chapter, title 14A of the Sammish Municipal Code. Which tab is that? Do we know?
Last tab, Mr. Mayor. For the sake of time, I'm going to try to make this a quick staff report, but we have our permit manager here to perhaps just to answer questions. This has been a very favorable ordinance. State, city of Sammish was the first in the state that actually deferred in the collection timeline of the impact fees due to dire economic conditions. Housing market has been experiencing it. Implementation of the program has been very successful. Actually, lots of cities asking us a copy of this particular ordinance that we've been implementing it. We're getting some requests from the east side of the Washington State cities and the west side of the Washington State of cities. We, when we adopted the ordinance, we put a sunset deadline. That was the December 30th, 2010. We're requesting council to extend this ordinance for another two years throughout the next biennial budget cycle. And then we come back to you at that time to see where we are, how things are moving. If the economy is moving in the right direction, if the housing market is improving, we may want to take a different tack. But currently, as we stand, this is a good ordinance. It's been very successful for development community. We have had a very success of implementing this thing and our permit manager's been doing an awesome job of keep tracking of this with our finance staff. So staff recommendation, this is the first reading of this ordinance. At the second reading of the ordinance, the approval of this ordinance, but you don't need to take any action tonight.
Tom?
Ben, over the last year, what is the value of the construction that's been deferred?
I have the numbers.
Sure.
From the time of the ordinance, we've actually...
Darcy, you want to introduce yourself, please?
My name's Darcy Donovan. I'm the permit center manager for the city of Sammish and managing the deferral process right now. Currently, the city has received 56 applications to defer impact fees and totaling $530,000. We've received 25 of them that, liens have been released and we have received back $206,000. So currently, we have $324,000 that's still recorded as a lien on property.
Let's explain what's going on here for the benefit of the audience. Typically, we used to collect the impact fees at the time of the permit issuance. And now with this ordinance, we actually change the collection point at the time of the sale. When a new home is built, there is no impact when the home is empty. What impact actually occurs is that the home is occupied. That was the logic that the council followed through it. And furthermore, we also defer some of our capital projects that are funded or supposed to be funded with the impact fees. So this worked quite well hand by hand with our capital programs.
Okay.
Well, Michelle, actually...
Oh, Michelle?
Actually, I think it's a better system to begin with because we're going to get our money because there's a lien on the property. So we're going to get the money at the closing anyway. So I think from a cash flow standpoint, it's going to, it should, it's a stimulus, actually. It's means that developers can get a house up and built where someone can see it to buy it and then they don't have to pay that fee until they, there's money coming in. So I think it's, I'm in favor of extending it and maybe we even make it a permanent change.
Let's do it for two-year extension, right?
Okay, all right. Well, go for two years.
Tom?
I agree with Michelle. This has been a good thing to do in the last couple of years. And I'm willing to take it for another two years or so, but my concern is this. While Sammish today is a bedroom community and really we're not being impacted until people move into their houses. However, we just passed this large town center plan, which is going to carry, like it or not, a bunch of infrastructure costs which the city will have to upfront. So I'm wondering if at the end of the next two-year period, if we really let it do some homework before then, exactly the impact of continuing this procedure, given the nature of town, of the town center project, which is going to be different and going to have some very significant upfront capital costs.
Ben and then Mark.
Let me respond to that and we're raising a very good point, Councilmember Dell. City council's policy have been, for the growth, growth pays for its weight. Never once this council invested upfront cash for any development activity since our incorporation. Unless council changes that policy, and if you do change that policy, that has ripple effects on number of ordinances and resolutions, one of which happens to be the impact fee, we need to take a look at it. My recommendation right now, when city has a huge unfunded capital list, including stormwater, including the transportation, including the parks, let's keep our eye on that ball at this juncture. And if you wanted to have a further discussion, we certainly can have that discussion at our retreat. But it's just not like that we have all these funds that we're trying to figure out how to spend it. You're already struggling with funding the existing needs and demands on this thing. So the direct answer to your question is unless you change the policy, that we would not be spending major infrastructure financing, there are different methods to finance those things besides just simply putting the city funds forward. City can be facilitator, city can seek for resources for it. You already put money into the budget to actually do that, so.
Thank you. Mark?
I wanted to comment, it wasn't easy for us, us, the council, previous council, to go through all the analysis on the various impact fees. A lot of the reason that I voted for the stiff impact fees that we have in place is not only because I wanted to see new development pay its own way and not be a burden on existing citizens, it was also kind of the rate of change which things were occurring. When you have 50 houses a year, the city council can put together funding for roads, parks that meet the needs of that slow growth. But when we have had analysis done of just taking transportation as one, the reason our impact fee for single-family house is $17,000 plus is because that's actually what it costs nearly to provide a road segment for that single house. When you have 10 houses, that's $170,000. When you have 100 houses, that's $1.7 million. I'm comfortable with the idea over the next two years while we see the slowdown to allow developers to pay those fees right at the point where the house is sold to an owner who's going to move in, understanding that what we're really doing is receiving impact fees for traffic and park use that could be within a couple of weeks of when the money's received by the city. At the point where you have 200, 300, 400 units a year and you're really talking about $4 and $6 million worth of stuff that needs to be bought or put in place, and you're saying, "Well, we got the money several days before the people started using the roads and started using the parks. Where are the facilities?" Then we're really starting to stretch it. So while things are slow, I'm comfortable with having the money come right at the point of sale. But when things pick up in speed, if you want to run a lean budget as a city, great, but you also then have to understand that the impacts, people are expecting us to provide roads for when the cars arrive, not after the cars are here for a couple of years. So I'm fine for two years, but at the point where it starts to rev up, I am going to definitely want to revisit this.
That's a good point. Of course, the impact fees aren't intended to be spent immediately. We have up to six years to spend the impact fees for the improvements. But I did want to give a little perspective statewide. We, Tom and I spent the day, the greater part of the day at the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Subcommittee meeting. And one of the items that was on the list to consider was a bill that came up last year based on Sammish ordinance, and that was to make it a state law restricting the timing at which cities can collect impact fees. And last year when it came up, we took a position opposing it because that's a state mandate. Right now, it's legal under state law for any citizen to do what we did, any municipality to do what we did. And so we opposed it last year and the Association of Washington Cities opposed that last year. And again, this year, we're, we've agreed to strongly defend against such a state mandate. So, and as far as this ordinance is concerned, I'm supporting it the way it's written. So this is the first reading. Is there other questions for staff? No other questions, then. Darcy, thank you. And this will be coming back to us when?
January 7th, I believe, the next available regular council member.
I think it's the 7th.
I'm sorry, December 7th.
December 7th. Okay, so that's our business. Now we have council reports. Let's start with John this time.
Did we have an executive session tonight or no?
We do. We do have a potential litigation and property acquisition.
No report since last night.
Okay.
Tom?
Well, as the mayor said, we spent the morning at the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Committee meeting in Sea-Tac. And we had a luncheon speaker who was well-known to most people. He's the former, one of the former lobbyists for AWC, Jim Justin, who's now taken a position as the, correct me if I'm wrong, Don, she's the governor's legislative liaison chair.
Right.
Who was invited to give us a overview of the coming environment from a legislative point of view for next year. I had a hard time finding anything really uplifting in what he was saying. The budget problem, if you will, is in the neighborhood of $4.8 billion, over and above what the legislature has already cut, and that's on the order of $10 million. They figure they might be able to get within a couple of billion of it, but getting the last $2 billion is going to be really, really painful. And we can expect a lot of the things that we've been getting from the state in the way of assistance are going to be going bye-bye. And more will be put down on the cities to do for yourselves. You can anticipate that social services will really get whacked. They are looking at what they can do to make life easier for the cities. Perhaps one of the concepts that was mentioned, and I hope I'm not blowing Jim's cover on anything, is, shall we say, rule suspension, which would include things like having to update your SMP quite as often, updating your comp plan quite as often, things like this. There's a whole laundry list of things out there. I didn't get them all and I won't even try to go through them now, but they're trying to ease the burden that's always coming in on cities by giving us a hand in other ways. We were told to focus on what we really want, to get our list of, our wish list down to things that are really, really crucial, and to focus on those in terms of our dealings with the legislature. And the committee did just that this morning. We took probably 100 different items and everybody got to vote on their top six priorities. And Don, I never heard how that came out in the end, but...
I haven't.
Do you? Okay. That will become the focus of the lobbying activities for the AWC for the next few months. And at that, I'll stop and let you pick up, so.
Thank you, Tom. Nancy?
I just want to remind us that this is Diabetes Awareness Month. And this council has committed not to serving sweets as part of the meetings like we usually do, that we enjoy. My father passed away of the diabetes-related consequences when he was in his early 40s. And so I've always been very sensitive to it. And I'm also aware that this is things like Food for the Hungry Month awareness. They kind of overlap in many ways. And I'm glad the city's recognizing these events and very successfully, the mayor's backed with help from the community and other city people, backed food bank collection, hopefully healthy, or mostly, I suppose holidays are an exception. So that's my report.
Thank you. Michelle?
No report.
No report.
Mark?
No report tonight.
Okay, the mayor's report will deal with rested today. Tom is correct that I was at the meeting, too. And this Association of Washington Cities Legislative Committee comprised this year of 87 members representing 62 cities. It's the largest ever we had. And so we broke it into subcommittees that have been meeting both in person and on webinars and conference calls, and we all came together today. And as Tom said, we went over the major priorities of all the subcommittees, boiled it down and voted on it, and I downloaded the vote that was emailed to us afterwards. And here are the major priorities that the Association of Washington City came up with. The first one is to pursue proactive public records proposals that address some of the problems that come with burgeoning public records requests. That was the top one. There are some real horror stories out there, citizens abusing that particular law. The second one was city fiscal flexibility, and that includes such things as the flexibility on the real estate excise tax that we tried to get last year and didn't quite make it, whereas we could allow the second quarter of the real estate tax, which, which right now is designated for capital items, to be used for parks' operation and maintenance. The third one was to pursue options for creating sustainable personnel-related costs, and that includes criteria for the binding arbitration. So that's number three on the list of priorities of the Association of Washington City this year. And then going down the list, the next one's pursue tax increment financing as a local option, infrastructure funding, street maintenance utility authority, ensure continued appropriation of committed state shared funds. As Tom pointed out, we have a, the state has a huge problem, and we're concerned about the state dipping in further. They've already swept the Public Works Trust Fund. They'll probably sweep it again. Our city's been putting in $500,000 a year, repaying the loan we got from the Public Works Trust Fund, and I suspect that that $500,000 is going to get swept right out again. So those are some of the items. There's a whole list of items, but the, I thought it was a very constructive committee discussion, and we do recognize that it doesn't make much sense to go and ask for more money from the state this year. So it's mainly flexibility issues, and I felt...
And no mandates.
Right. And no new mandates. In fact, I did bring up one, and it's one where we have, I believe we have a requirement on a DUI that the car is impounded. Is that correct? Well, there was a proposal to require, by state law, that all cities shall require that the car be imposed on a DUI. And certainly, there's some very compelling stories of incidents where, for example, a person's arrested with DUI, he's released, he goes back, gets in his car, and he drove. And in a recent incident or last year, someone was killed. So there's compelling reasons, but I brought up the point that this is, again, a local issue, and we should not have a state mandate on it. Cities like Sammamish have decided to make that a requirement, but there were some cities there that agreed, and when we actually took a vote on it, it was only one vote against, sending it back to the committee and saying, hey, let's not endorse such a bill. So the point is that we're trying to reduce the state mandates, funded or unfunded, and let us do our own business here the way we see best. So that's my report. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
No, Mr. Mayor. The only report that I have is that we have an executive session that, for potential litigation and property acquisition.
And how long do we think that will take?
20 minutes.
And do we assume any action afterwards?
I don't think so. No.
Don't think so? Okay. We're adjourned to executive session for 20 minutes.
We have to come back in a jester.
So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second?
In favor, say aye.
If we don't adjourn, does that mean our city manager can't go to Turkey for four weeks?
Adjourn.